It's called order, June 11th, 2024, City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Phil Towns Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Londo.
Here.
Councilmember Lucuro.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Approval to the revised agenda?
Move approval of the agenda as revised.
Second.
Any changes? Any dissension?
Not beyond the revision, sir.
Thank you. Takes us to the special presentation, proclamation commemorating Juneteenth. And I know that, one of you guys wants to read it?
Sure.
No, why don't you?
You guys just like when I talk all out. City of Hazel Park proclamation commemorating Juneteenth, whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the abolition of slavery in America, having originated following the emancipation of Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865. And whereas on that date, the Union Army arrived in Galveston and brought news of the Emancipation Proclamation to enslaved African Americans living there who celebrated through feasting, prayer, song, and dance. And whereas the following year saw the first official Juneteenth celebrations take place in Texas, and the tradition soon spread throughout the United States to become the annual social and educational event that it is today. And whereas enshrined as a federal holiday on, in 2021, Juneteenth continues to provide an opportunity to promote and cultivate knowledge and appreciation of African American history and culture. And whereas it is important to reaffirm a national commitment to justice and equality. And whereas it is, it was in the sphere of those ideals that the City of Hazel Park adopted a human rights ordinance in 2021, and recognize the inherent dignity and equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family, and sought to prevent discrimination based on physical, mental, demographic, and/or ideological differences. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Hazel Park does hereby commemorate June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth, and calls on individuals and organizations to condemn all forms of prejudice and celebrate our treasured ideals of liberty and equality. Furthermore, in recognition of Juneteenth, 2024, there will be a flag raising ceremony Wednesday, June 19th at 1:00 p.m. at the Salute Two Heroes Memorial Courtyard located at Hazel Park City Hall.
Thank you. Now it'd be, proclamation is made. Proclamation declaring June 2024 as Pride Month.
Whereas Michigan is home to an estimated 373,000 residents who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+. And whereas Hazel Park has a significant population of LGBTQ+ residents, many of whom have worked directly on the pursuit of equality. And whereas Hazel Park's LGBTQ+ residents contribute to the fabric of our society, hold positions across sectors of our economy, and at multiple levels of government. And whereas Hazel Park has been at the forefront of advancing civil rights for LGBTQ+ people, including serving as the final Michigan city to pass a human rights ordinance and ban on conversion therapy in the absence of such protections at the state level, and which had two residents in a loving same-sex relationship successfully take their fight for the right to adopt the other's children to the United States Supreme Court. And whereas Hazel Park and Michigan's economic growth depends on welcoming people of diverse backgrounds, ending discrimination, and attracting and retaining top talent from around the world. And whereas Hazel Park must continue to support the rights of every citizen to experience freedom from discrimination, and recognize the continued need for education and awareness to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas June 2024 is the 55th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, which is recognized as a catalyst for the modern LGBTQ+ civil rights movement. And whereas Hazel Park celebrates LGBTQ+ individuals this month, including raising its pride flag on June 1st, and we also recognize the important work that must be done to continue building a more fair and just world for all. And now therefore, Mike Webb, Mayor of Hazel Park, does hereby proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month, and encourage everyone to stand against discrimination and reject violence towards LGBTQ+ individuals, to promote self-affirmation, dignity, and equity, and to continue working toward building a brighter future that promotes liberty and justice for all.
Make that proclamation, and also make a comment. We had a wonderful event raising the flag the other day, and I thought one that attended was respectful as much as, even though we had a few that weren't, to represent the equality across the board. And I think that's what, really what it stands for. Thank you. And Councilman Londo here made a great speech. May I want to thank you?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Let's move forward with the resolution honoring youth assistance. Councilman Lucuro.
Sure. We have a little presentation.
Are you fancy?
I'm Andy Lucuro, Hazel Park City Council and Chair of the Hazel Park Youth Assistance. A little history on the youth assistance. It began here in Hazel Park 71 years ago, on April 27th, 1953, with Superintendent Wilfred Webb and Juvenile Court Judge Arthur Moore. Together with a group of Hazel Park citizens, they developed a program to assist youth within their own community rather than referring them to juvenile court. The youth assistance program has expanded over the years and is now a unit of Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division with 26 offices throughout the county. Our mission statement is to strengthen youth and families and to reduce the incidence of delinquency, abuse, and neglect through community involvement. Our model programs exist due to a unique tri-sponsorship with the City of Hazel Park, the Hazel Park School District, and the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division. All youth assistance services are offered to Oakland County residents free of charge. The participation of youth and their family is voluntary and confidential. Although the program is sponsored by the courts, there is no judicial or legal action. All community programs are implemented and overseen by local volunteers. This is a picture of the tri-sponsorship organization with Oakland County, the schools, and the City of Hazel Park. We're also sponsored by resident community members, community groups, local businesses, local organizations, educators, and Hazel Park first responders. We've also, I might take this time, to thank Hazel Park Youth Assistance has recently become a 501(c)(3), which helps us to raise some larger funds from outside, you know, other businesses and, rather than just what we have been in the past. We get sponsorship support, you know, donations from the fire department, how many, we've been to the Bowl-a-thon, they raise a lot of money for youth assistance. Local businesses, and we have, the whole board is mainly made up of Hazel Park citizens. With local volunteers, in 2022, spent over 786 volunteer hours. The primary, so I will introduce our caseworker, Amy Sullivan, and she'll go on with the rest of this.
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. And thank you so much, Amanda. I know you helped us a lot with that 501(c)(3), so we really appreciate that. So my name's Amy, I'm the caseworker for Hazel Park Youth Assistance. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the casework services. We follow the prevention model of primary prevention and secondary prevention. So primary prevention being the community programs that our volunteers put on, secondary prevention being casework services that is provided by the caseworker. All of this is to avoid having kids be in the juvenile justice system. So our casework services, they're voluntary, they're confidential, and there's no cost for services. They're short-term and very individualized. Whatever that family is needing, I like to sit down with them and see how things are going at home, at school, in the community, and see what we can put in place to help support them. And referrals can come from anybody, so that can be parents, it can be teachers, it can be administrators. We get referrals from the police department and the juvenile court as well. So the community organization that I mentioned, we do community events and programs, we have skill-building scholarships, camp scholarships, and emergency needs funds, and then family education programs as well.
Steve Morton, Vice Chair of Hazel Park Youth Assistance. Right now, you have a slide in front of you of many of our programs and events that are ongoing and some that just happen as we schedule them. We're open to having more programs. We have our meetings on the third Monday of every month at the REC Center at 4:30 p.m., so citizens and council members are welcome to attend, volunteers too. If you have an idea that would benefit the youth, you're welcome to attend and share your ideas. And these events, we have many pictures we'll be showing you. I'm going to speak about three of the programs that we don't have pictures of. The Parent Project Truancy Workshop, we had leaders and educators from Oakland County Children's Village speak to parents at the REC Center last May, this past May. We also have camp and skill-building scholarships for families that may not be able to afford programs and camps for their children. They just fill out a simple application, and we will provide some funds, some limited funding, to help them attend these camps and skill-building programs. We also have had an ongoing, and it may continue next year, it's a partnership, a rock hunt that Hazel Park High School students create some rocks, and they're placed around the city in the spring for students to, all youth, to find. If they find a rock, they bring it to the library, and they get a gift certificate for perhaps some local gifts from businesses or food from local restaurants in the area. And that's usually fun. There's probably many rocks still laying around, so if you find one, no guarantee on redemption, we're running low on time on that, but always a fun event. As for the pictures, you see us here presenting to the school board last year, celebrating our 70th anniversary. We were also here a year ago, thank you, and we brought a similar cookie. And here's our celebration at the REC Center. Councilman and also chairman of our youth assistance chairperson, Andy Lucero, along with county caseworker Pam Strakowski, making a proclamation celebrating 70 years of youth assistance. We are the first, Hazel Park was the first youth assistance in the county. It's now in every school district in Oakland County. We also attend and set up a table at the Hometown Huddle at Hazel Park High School, and last year's theme last September was gratitude. And a picture made it into the CNG News of a few of us there, firemen, retired captain Brandon Stinet, and school board member Bev Hinton are also pictured with Andy and myself. And every year for at least a dozen years running, we have done holiday shopping sprees, winter shopping sprees for at least a dozen families in the community that have been selected by our caseworker. And they get to come to Target and spend up to $350 per family, or for 500 per family, 350 per child. We partner with the firemen and police officers, and Officer Toro, who's in the back right here, has volunteered in the past, and we definitely appreciate the police and fire personnel helping with us. And of course, we cannot forget about our youth recognition celebration, that's members of the community and teachers in the schools and administrators select students to be honored, and we have that celebration. And we had about 40 students honored, and we have pictured their superintendent, Dr. Crouppie, city manager Ed Klobuchar, and our keynote speaker and longtime employee of the city, Jared Gajos, as the keynote speaker, another great event. And also another one that's getting a lot of fame and notoriety is our Grinchmas. Born out of COVID, when we were stuck in our homes, we decided to request care packages for families and children in the community, and we packaged them in a Grinch bag and randomly select up to about 100 families to receive these on their porch. And inside, there's winter supplies, food supplies, coloring books, educational, and there you see Bev Hinton smiling away. Judge Hartwell and his wife also helped out on that. Coming up, a new event, countywide, is it countywide?
Oakland County Parks is sponsoring, along with the City of Hazel Park Recreation Department.
Oakland County Parks, along with Hazel Park Recreation, is sponsoring Family Fun Day, Saturday, August 10th, Scout Park, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Come, there should be a lot of fun activities for family and children. And again, if you have an idea, or you want to join us, or just see what we're about, third Tuesday of every month at 4:30 p.m. at the REC Center, come join, you might just stay awhile. Once again, thank you, and I'm going to present to council member and Chair Andy Lucero our annual request for support and sponsorship to the city, and once again, thank you for all that you do for us.
Thank you for all your time.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to thank Andy and Steve and Amy for everything that they do. Youth Assistance is a valuable, important organization in the City of Hazel Park, and as you point out, we are the founding community for youth assistance in Oakland County. So we have a proud and honorable tradition of serving our youth and the members of this board, and I think, Andy, you've even been on the Board of Youth Assistance longer than you've been on the City Council.
Yes, half a year, year or so.
So it's been...
All 70 years.
You'll have to repeat that.
I didn't hear that either.
Said all 70 years. Say that with an affinity.
All 70 years.
All 70 years.
Do want to finish this off with the resolution.
Thank you.
We have that.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
City of Hazel Park Resolution Honoring Youth Assistance. Whereas Oakland County Youth Assistance began in Hazel Park in 1953 with a group of Hazel Park citizens led by Wilfred Webb and Juvenile Court Judge Arthur Moore. And whereas together they developed a program to assist troubled youth within their own communities rather than referring them to juvenile court. And whereas youth assistance exists due to a unique tri-sponsorship with the local government, the local school district, and the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division, allowing programs to expand over the years to become a unit of Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division with 26 offices throughout Oakland County. Whereas, and whereas youth assistance caseworkers are available in each school district to provide counseling services, assistance, and growth opportunities to youth and their families. And whereas the Hazel Park Youth Assistance Committee is rightly proud of its role in founding Oakland County Youth Assistance, and under the current leadership of myself, Andy Lucero, strives to provide important services to the youth of Hazel Park. And now therefore, and now therefore be it resolved, the City of Hazel Park Council hereby honors youth assistants for their 71 years of dedicated service to Hazel Park and Oakland County, and we extend our gratitude to the volunteers and employees of this important program. Thank you guys both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should also note that this is going to be Amy Sullivan's last presentation to you after seven years with us?
Five.
Five, seems like seven. She's moving to Rochester schools to be a part of Rochester Youth Assistance. At times, as we know, they transfer people here and there, and I'd like to thank you, we'd like to thank you for a job well done. Excellent, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you. Mr. Klobuchar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
How would you like to handle this one?
You know what? First of all, if you want to go to the, I'll read the resolution, if you'd like to present it, if we could have the Scouts and Scout leadership of Cub Scout PAC 1221 and Boy Scout Troop 1542, please approach the microphone, and I will read this resolution into the record. City of Hazel Park, a resolution honoring the outstanding Scouts of Cub Scout PAC 1221 and Boy Scout Troop 1542. Whereas the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts of America have played an important role in building the character and capability of young people in the United States for more than 100 years. And whereas Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts of America's goal is to teach American youth self-reliance, character, ethical decision-making, and civic leadership through their programs. And whereas, following this tradition of service, a group of local scouts alongside their scoutmasters undertook an important community project during the first weekend of May 2024, in which they helped to clean and organize the City of Hazel Park Historical Museum. And whereas, the City of Hazel Park wishes to thank the following members of Cub Scout PAC 1221, Stam Slager, Asher DeFilippo, Holden Christensen, and Riker Fetter. And also thank the following members of Boy Scout Troop 1542, Truman Nagy, Evan Iverson, Ashton Bander, Oliver Cook, Jackson Hemlinger, Foster Wright, Andrew DeFilippo, Patrick Small, Ronan Brewster, and Aiden Jones, as well as their dedicated scoutmasters, Jackie Wisnewski, Dante Nagy, and Ms. Stephanie Wisnewski. So, therefore be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby recognizes and thanks the members of Cub Scout PAC 1221 and Boy Scout Troop 1542 for their efforts in helping to clean and organize the Hazel Park Historical Museum. Thank you all so much for everything that you've done. And I have individual certificates here for all of you to keep, and I want to thank Ms. Sherry Dirksky from the Hazel Park Historical Commission for providing me the names and making sure that we had a chance to honor these fine young scouts for everything that they've done.
Thank you.
Here it is. Happy resolution for everyone as well. All because of you guys. See? Okay. You guys can take this. Okay. Oh, yeah. And Riker McNeely will correct the resolutions. And again, I want to thank Sherry Dirksky and the other members of the Hazel Park Historical Commission for all the work that they do, and for making us aware of these great scouts. So thank you, appreciate you very much.
Thank you again. That takes us to our civic announcements. Like to open up the civic announcements? Anyone have any special civic announcements they'd like to mention? Here you know them, or close civic announcements? Public discussion? You might have any public discussion? We got a few envelopes up here. We can start with Mike Flores, if you'd like.
Buenos dias. Good evening, council. My name is Mike Flores, on Manatee Avenue. I stand before you as a dedicated resident of Hazel Park, a city renowned for its diversity, inclusivity, and strong community values. Before I continue, I want to state that my comments are directed towards my city council, not any of you as individuals or individually whom I consider passionate neighbors doing great things for our community. To my council, over the past few months, I, along with many other concerned residents, have consistently requested that a council adopt a ceasefire resolution particularly addressing the ongoing genocide in Gaza. Today, I reiterate this request, bolstered by recent United Nations developments. The U.S. has formally introduced a U.N. ceasefire proposal, which has now been approved by the U.N. Security Council. This global endorsement of a ceasefire aligns perfectly with our values as a community committed to peace and humanitarian aid. The political coverage is now ample enough for Hazel Park to take this step and support a ceasefire resolution. By adopting this resolution, we affirm our city's commitment to peace, the protection of civilians, and the support of humanitarian efforts. This action not only resonates with our community's core values, but also sets a powerful example for other municipalities. It demonstrates that Hazel Park does not turn a blind eye to global humanitarian crimes, but rather stands in solidarity with those affected. However, if this council remains unable in supporting a ceasefire statement or resolution that truly reflects our values as Hazel Park residents, I assure, we will be back. Not because we believe that constant repetition will change the council's position, but because we refuse to let ourselves be changed. We refuse to let our voices be silenced or our commitment to justice and peace be diminished. We will continue to speak up at every council meeting, ensuring that our stance is recorded and remembered. When future generations study these times, they will learn that Hazel Park residents were unwavering in the pursuit for peace. They will know that despite the council's inaction, the residents of this great community consistently advocated for what is right and just. Our perseverance is a testament to the strength and integrity of our community. We will value, we will continue to push for this resolution, not out of defiance, but out of a deep-seated belief in the power of a collective voice and good. We stand for peace, for humanitarian aid, and the protection of all civilians, many of whom are women, are children, who are disproportionately impacted by similar conflicts. We hope that you will join us in supporting a ceasefire resolution that truly reflects the values of Hazel Park. As always, council and mayor, gracias, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Sarah Pitchford, 334 East Bernard. Hello again. This is my fifth time joining this group in Hazel Park to ask for a permanent and durable ceasefire in Gaza as people are being slaughtered and starved. As a friendly reminder, this is a local issue on multiple levels, from the direct impact it has on the local families here who have lost loved ones, to our tax dollars that are being used to fund and arm this genocide. Word gets around pretty quick in this small town. I know council people are offended and standing on their business and will not be bullied into taking a stance against the starving of millions, slaughtering of children, and funding of a genocide. I guess the question stands, why are you all so silent? Is it because your feelings are hurt, so you stop listening to input? Or are you too close to funders of this catastrophe? Or worse, do you actually support this? I will now list all public discussion that you council people have shared in the seven months against the attacks on Palestine. Your silence over the last seven months has spoken volumes and left a lot of space for assumptions. In that same time, you have passed a lot of resolutions, supporting people with disabilities, different cultures and races, supporting women, and so on. But when you get an opportunity to stand for something so vile and so inhumane as genocide, you say what? That's right, nothing. When we exercise our right to speak three minutes a month, the mayor says, we have been patient with you. Sir, we have been patient with you. You stand in front of an Israeli arms dealer and talk about our city, and then you change the order of public comment with no notice as an active attempt to silence the community you pass a resolution after resolution to prove you support. We are your healthcare workers, we are your mental health workers, queer and disabled citizens, parents, community leaders, taxpayers, business owners, homeowners. We are Hazel Park, and we need our city to say, hey, stop spending our community dollars to smash in the skulls of innocent children. I'm sorry that there are children here today, but maybe these powerful leaders need to hear this. Our money is funding this, and you guys have said nothing. I believe that adopting a ceasefire resolution does align with Hazel Park's original values of peace, inclusivity, and human rights. And I, again, won't stop showing up and asking for my elected officials to take a stance. I can't stomach why, as human beings, you guys are, it's seemingly impossible to make a statement that says we don't support this.
Your time is expired.
What are you waiting for?
Renee Leighton-Ham? Barely read it.
I'm very moved after hearing the last couple speakers. My name is Renee Lichtman. I lived in this neighborhood for some 30 years. We raised our three children here in this community. My doctors were here, my dentist. So, it's a privilege for me to address you on this issue of the ceasefire. I am a Holocaust survivor, and I was young, I was a little bit younger than Anne Frank. And so, what's been happening in Gaza, of course, brings back many memories, they're called triggers. And what is being committed in our name, our name, all of us, is genocide. Finally, people can use that word. It took a little while. I would also use the word, it's a Holocaust, against people of color, Palestinian people. It took me a while to come to that conclusion, because as a younger person in this community, I was very pro-Israel. I believed in a two-state solution, and I still do. But what's been happening, and it's all in our name, trust me, is a realization by normal people that this is a historical crime, and especially as someone like me, against children. I was one of the founders of the World Federation of Jewish Child Survivors, including in Michigan. I'm still the leader of the Child Survivors Group in Michigan. Only about 10% of Jewish children survived in the Holocaust. 10% survived, and 90% were murdered, because we had no hiding place or any help from adults. Fortunately for me, I was hidden in France during the whole war. My father died as a French soldier fighting the Nazis, and as a matter of fact, I just came back from France, from that community where I was hidden. I ask you, I beg you, to sign a ceasefire resolution. Please do not be a bystander. The first thing that we've learned from the Second World War, just want to finish my sentence, is that there were three types of people. There were the perpetrators who committed the crimes, there were the victims, but then the majority of people were what we called bystanders. They stood by, and they knew what was going on, and they did nothing. Please, sign this ceasefire resolution. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here in front of you. My name is Sohir Ganem. I live in Huntington Woods, and I'm here also to urge you to put on your agenda a ceasefire resolution, which is not controversial. We are doing the same thing that you are going through here with Huntington Woods, so we are in the process of working on a ceasefire resolution there, too, because this is the least that can be done at this time. And, I mean, this is something that we have to deal with as conscientious people. We can't be just watching this. And we know that you, this council, not even waiting for one meeting when Ukraine was invaded by Russia, the first meeting, March 8, 2022, you took a minute of silence for the people of Ukraine. And what this tells me, that Palestinian people to you don't have the same value like Ukrainian people, not like Israeli people, not like as American people. And I am here because I feel that I need to let, you know, I'm not going to let it go that, you know, brown people are considered of a lesser value. This is what you are telling me. This is what I read. So, I would like to just mention that I want to honor one of the people who got killed with American bombs. Her name is Rena Abu Shab. She was killed with her family, her mom, sister, niece, and few of other relatives on October 11th with our American missiles. And this is her picture. She was supposed to be graduating this month with honors in geographic information systems. So, I would like to take a minute of silence to honor the Palestinian people, 16,000 children, and around 37,000 people who are innocent. So, I'd like to take a minute of silence honoring these people who were killed with our bombs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Charles Lussi?
I'm going to lighten the mood a little bit here. Charles Lussi, 24141, or no, I'm sorry, that's my business address, 24141 John R., 335 East Hayes. I'm up here as the newly appointed chairman of the Beautification Commission. Ed, Amanda, Alyssa, Luke, Mike, Andy, and Andrea. You know, there's been this discussion of are we going to be a task force, are we going to be, stay a commission? And the, you know, the four commissioners that are left after the recent resignations, we've all voted that we are going to stay a commission. We are excited about the new people who are up for appointment today. I wanted to come up and advocate for Bill, Tanya, Timber, and Bobby. They've all showed civic engagement, taking on responsibility to help the city move forward. Ed, you had chaired at the last, these two meetings that you were interested in attending a strategy session with us, and we would like to take you up on that. We want, we're going to look through the city's master plan to find what are some of the low-hanging fruit that we can get started with because of the budgetary constraints. We do have a funding arm that has come online, which should provide ample finance for our projects, which will cost the city $0. And we want to collaborate with other city organizations, like the Sustainability Commission, to make sure that we're not all doing the same thing in different vacuum systems, and that we're collaborating where it makes sense to. And so, we have, you know, since McFaul started the commission, and, you know, we took on the beautification, the yard, Beautiful Yard Award, which we executed really well last year. Because of the hiccups in the current, you know, in the leadership that's resigned, we are not doing that this year, but we plan on, you know, having that as one of our programs. There's also discussion of having the Flower Club and the Hazel Park Garden Club and the operations at the community gardens folded under the Beautification Commission. And so, really spearheading our efforts to get some traction and help this city beautify, get beautified, and do the things that is going to keep people coming here and keep people from moving out of the city. So, I just want to say that I fully support the four individuals who are up for appointment, Bill, Tanya, Timber, and Bobby. And I would very much appreciate your approving those this evening, so that the commission can get off to starting the new reimaged organization that we are striving to become.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate you.
Any other one else for public discussion? Seeing no one, close public discussion. Motion to approve the consent agenda, 1 through 9.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, but pull out items 6 and 8 for discussion.
Support. Any dissension? There you go. Motion passes. Number 6, resolution to adopt a moratorium on functional mushrooms, retail sales, and establishments. Any comments?
I'll hand it over to the city manager.
No, we just, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're adopting this moratorium lately. We've seen a proliferation of interest in people opening mushroom shops, and there may be some misunderstanding about what is legal and what is not legal in terms of the sale of mushrooms. There may be some misunderstanding about that, so we want to clarify this. We want to make sure that we have a chance to take a look at this. So, we're requesting a moratorium be opposed immediately on new mushroom shops in the City of Hazel Park for six months until we can examine a regulatory framework to admit these businesses in the future.
Thank you. I might be the only person up here dumb enough to admit it, but I think that psilocybin is an important substance. It's one that I do consume. However, when we decriminalize entheogenics, it specifically stated that commercial sales and commercial manufacture remain illegal, and certainly not leveling any accusations against the current shops. However, I do understand, and it's not just here, in many places, businesses are sort of getting creative and setting up these stores in hopes and anticipation of an eventual movement on that type of thing. But three stores in a short period of time is certainly a choice. I've seen the margins on sales of the other types of things like shaga and reishi and lion's mane and other mushrooms and supplements that they do sell. But I agree that a six-month moratorium is a good idea, just to sort of take stock of our current situation, analyze whether there is a sufficient market for it, and then revisit this issue in the future.
Right. And at the same time, I'm sure there are going to be different legislative developments and possibly developments within the court system as well on different cases that are up. So, we'll watch those and monitor those cases and things like that. But right now, the administration strongly recommends that the best course of action for us at this point in time is a moratorium for six months, and we request that council approve that.
Thank you.
And then, you also wish to discuss number 8, the appointment of chief of police. Could I have Lieutenant, well, Chief Designate William Hamill approach the microphone, please? As you all know, Chief Brian Buchholz did an excellent job for the City of Hazel Park for many years, has retired effective June 30th, and he is now on vacation, enjoying himself. And I have conducted an interview process, and I respectfully request confirmation of Executive Lieutenant William Hamill to be the City of Hazel Park's next chief of police. Lieutenant Hamill has an exemplary career with the City of Hazel Park. He has participated in, obviously, the patrol division, the detective bureau, he's served in a special unit, and he has been second-in-command to Chief Buchholz for his entire tenure. He has been acting chief of police for several weeks at a time on multiple different occasions, and always performed his duties in an exemplary manner. He is highly intelligent, an excellent communicator, and he has the respect of the men and women who serve in the Hazel Park Police Department. So, without hesitation, I respectfully request his confirmation as chief of police for the City of Hazel Park.
Do you need a motion?
You can do a motion for the entire consent agenda now.
I excitedly move approval of consent agenda, items 1 through 9.
Support. Any dissension, any more discussion?
Congratulations, Chief Designate William Hamill. You guys, we all love Brian, but you're also going to love Bill Hamill, and I think the city's going to love Bill Hamill. I'm excited about him serving as our chief of police. And, well, I'll turn it over to him and ask him if there's anything he would like to say to the mayor and council and the people of the City of Hazel Park.
First of all, I'm honored. When Ed asked me to be the chief, just an honor. I was fortunate to be employed, start my employment with the city in 1996. As Ed had stated, I've served within the patrol division, served in special units, made sergeant, detective, or excuse me, lieutenant, detective lieutenant, and I've had the honor now, hopefully for a long time, to serve as your next police chief. I'm fumbled. We have a, I served under, every chief that I've served under was a good chief. I've worked with and served with a lot of good people. We've got a lot of good officers, we've got a lot of good support staff in the department. I think that we're going to continue running very well, and I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Klobuchar, city council, the other department heads, to continue making Hazel Park a good place to live and work. And again, I thank you, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Council, again, thank you for your confidence in my appointment, and like I said, I'm looking forward to great things, and we're going to continue to do a great job down there. And I'm so proud of this police department, because they've done such a good job navigating some very difficult situations and times in the past few years, and I think they performed in an exemplary manner. So, and Bill's been a big part of that. So, looking forward to continuing to work with him.
Okay, takes us to the administrative reports. Ordinance to amend Hazel Park Municipal Code Title IX, Peace and Morals and Welfare, Chapter 9.02, violation of state law, as follows second reading.
Mr. Mayor, respectfully request approval on second reading of this ordinance. It brings the ordinance in compliance with the language and state law.
Council? Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Hazel Park, the amendment to the Hazel Park Municipal Code Title IX, Public Peace Morals and Welfare, Chapter 9.02, violation of state law. Support.
Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes. This is to the boards and commissions, council. Any?
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests the following reappointments to boards and commissions, to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Tom Jones and Serene Papakian, to the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Charles Hempel, and to Main Street Hazel Park, Mr. Kurt Gohr, Sir Adam O'Connor, and Ms. Nicole White.
So, move. You got a motion on that one?
I move to reappoint the sitting commissioners. I don't know, Tom Jones and Serene Papakian, sorry, I'm reading too fast, to Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Charles Hempel to Downtown Development Authority, and Kurt Gohr, Adam O'Connor, and Nicole White to Main Street Hazel Park. I move to reappoint.
A second.
All right. Any changes, dissension, discussion? Okay, that one goes. Now, that moves us down to the beautification appointments that are requested here.
Mr. Mayor, we are requesting the appointment of Bobby Mohica, Tanya Osby, and Timber Shea to the Beautification Committee. I know there's another applicant here, but I think we have a couple questions, so I need to ask him. So, today, we are requesting Bobby, Tanya, and Timber be appointed.
I'll move appointment of Timber Shea, Tanya Osby, and Bobby Mohica to the Beautification Commission. Support.
Support. Any more discussion, dissension? And they are on the beautification committee. Thank you. And that will move us down to... And that will move us down to old business, any old business, any new business? I want to say that those signs that we have, those beaming signs around the parks are working well. They give caution and to slow down around the parks.
Good, and we're going to hopefully acquire even a few more of those.
If we acquire some more, that would be nice.
So they do, and be doing a good job, and like I said, I want to let the, thank the police.
A lot of good, great comments from a lot of people about those around the parks.
We are trying to use technology when we can, and hopefully people will take notice of the sign and slow down. It just makes everything safer for everybody.
Any comments from council? For new business?
Yeah, if administration could give us just an update synopsis on the Memorial Day Festival.
Memorial Day Festival was successful this year. It was a profit-making endeavor. We had a lot of great comments and feedback from folks, thought they had a great time. We had very few incidents. I want to compliment Police Department and the carnival staff and the recreation staff all for doing a great job. It was very much a problem-free event. We didn't get the cooperation we wished we would have from the weather, so it wasn't quite as profitable as it was in years past. We did have to shut down early a night because of very inclement weather, but other than that, it was a great ride package. We're looking forward to doing it again next year. I want to thank everybody that came out.
And any other comments, questions, new business? Close new business. Communications from department heads. Hold up, Tim Young from the water department.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to come up and speak about Brian Buchholz, and I want to wish him a nice, healthy, long retirement. He's a good friend, and I've always enjoyed working with him. Bill Hamill, you and I have worked together, and it's going to be really, real good in the future as we move forward there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Tim.
Chief Hamill, you have any comments you would like to give forth? Seeing none. You know, department heads in those chairs back there, seeing none. City attorney?
No, thank you.
City manager?
Just to talk a little bit, first of all, I want to say we're making some legislative progress, been working with Mike McFall on some very important issues related to municipal finance, and hopefully some of those things will bear fruit. And, well, our system remains fundamentally broken. We're working on trying to fix that. Now, I'd like to also talk a little bit about what we're doing on John R. We are talking about implementing a road diet. I want everybody to understand, this is what we've been talking about for the last five years. This road diet and the grant was actually, I think, accepted when Alyssa was a new city council member.
First year.
Me and Alyssa were first elected. The intent of this is to try to create complete streets and a safer, make John R. a safer corridor and accommodate bike traffic. And studies have shown that these things work usually, and that they also have the added benefit of spurring economic development and kind of can spur a little bit of a renaissance in an area when we undertake these things. So I know that I've had some calls in the past few days, and I've been honest with everyone, and as I'm honest with my mayor and council. We believe this is going to work and be a successful project. We may be dumping too much traffic onto that road from I-75, and it may be too narrow. But I think we need to give this an honest try, and we need to look at this for its potential benefit. We're not making significant structural changes. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I think it has the potential to be a very good thing, because we've seen where these road diets have been implemented, that they have successfully catalyzed a new economic development and turned communities into walkable, exciting places. So we do have a lot of opportunity, I think, with this, and I urge every resident that might be questioning it to give it a chance. And we were able to tweak, I think, the road diet on the south end a little bit, and I think that alleviated a lot of the congestion problems down there. Plus, remember, this has been delayed for five years because of the I-75 widening project, and then last year, there were no contractors available to implement the project. So this is five years in the making. It's funded primarily by a grant, and I'm just asking that everybody keep an open mind with this, and let's give this an honest try, because I think there are some potential benefits. If it doesn't work, I'll be the first one to come to council in a year or two and say it's not going to work. But I think there's a great chance that everyone will benefit from this.
We didn't look at this in a vacuum either, because we looked at very much other planning department issues from other planners throughout the whole region.
Absolutely.
Stuff. Over the years, they've been saying this for the last 20 years or not longer, that this has been working to grow the economic development through the city, as well as protect our residents from walking so close to the street.
Every, every planner that we've met with and every consultant that's come to Hazel Park has suggested that, going back to when we were a target community for the Congress for the New Urbanism back when, you know, back in the mid-teens, and then even in the 90s when we took a look at it. So when, you know, you were on the planning committee.
We were looking at it in the late 90s.
To tag in on this, as I sit on the committee for the safer streets with our lovely James Finkley in the audience here, this isn't just bike lanes, this isn't just for bikers, this isn't bikes against cars, which is a lot of the narrative that we hear. This is about safer streets for everybody, including people in vehicles. There is, there is tons of scientific data that proves that the survivability of crashes between 25, 20, 30 miles an hour is 90%. When you get up to 35 and 40 miles per hour, that survivability drops down to 15%. I do not think that it is a kindness that we do to a city when we are expecting people to be out and be active and be safe when we are not providing them with safe ways to get there. When we talk about safer streets, we are also talking about the intentional traffic that we're driving to our local businesses, to our downtown district area, and bike lanes and road diets are part of that process. So I'm really excited. We have a lot of support from our local businesses on this as well. So this is about walkability, this is about accessibility. We have seniors that live in this community, families that live in this community. Not everybody that rides a bike, not everybody that is a pedestrian is also a bicyclist and vice versa. So these are safer streets for everybody, including people traveling through in cars.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we're going to constantly be evaluating it, and like I said, we did some minor tweaks to the south end, and I think traffic is flowing well now, and I'm hearing very few.
It's a lot safer.
Or complaints.
For sure. You don't have cars right up on the curb.
Like I say, just give, give this, give this a chance, and if we have to add a traffic control device along the way, we will do so. And, you know, let's just, that's all that I have to say, is let's try to make this as successful as possible. Please pardon our dust for a little while and the inconvenience, but we hope to have it completed well before July is over. So, thank you.
And it moves us to council member Washington for your comments.
Okay. Hello, thank everyone for coming out today. First and foremost, happy pride. I went to Motor City and marched in the parade this weekend, so had a good time there. I want to thank everyone that came out for public discussion tonight and sharing your heartfelt words with us. Mike F., Sarah, Renee, Sohere, and also Charles for speaking on behalf of the new commissioners for the beautification commission. I also want to thank those new commissioners for their patience while we figured out what we were going to be doing with that commission. And I also want to say to published Equal Rights Act.
Thank you. Council member Carol?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is wonderful weather out there, the summer is upon us, and so please watch out for the Also, I don't know if you've, people have heard on the news about priority waste purchasing GFL. So priority, I'm having Sacra meeting tomorrow morning, we'll find out more about it, but that's what's going to be going on here. Priority waste will be bought, the contract's for about 600,000 residents in southeast Michigan. I want to finish with, if you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. And thank you to all the people who are coming out here and participating in the democratic process.
Thank you. Council member London?
Happy pride. I'd like to thank everybody that came to our pride flag raising. I am a free speech absolutist, so I thought the event was a smashing success. We raised the flag, and that is all that matters. I would like to thank Representative Mike McFall for coming, as well as my friend Congresswoman Haley Stevens. Chief Hamill, congratulations. Loved your predecessor, I'm sure we're going to all love you just as much. One of my favorite things about Chief Buch was the level of appreciation and humility he had for the job, and based off your remarks tonight, I think we're in good hands with you. Mr. Lichtman, it is an honor to have you, sir. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. And Sohere, I trust your memory better than mine when it comes to what we've done at previous council meetings, so I'd like to thank you for such a creative use of your time. And then lastly, happy Father's Day to all of the fathers out there. Father can mean a litany of different things. It doesn't have to be a parent, so shout out to all the stepdads, boyfriends, or all the other positive male father figures in children's lives. That day is for you as much as it is for everybody else. And then on the dais, I'd like to also wish Mayor Webb and, what's your name, city manager Ed Carter, happy Father's Day.
How many, how many mushrooms?
You sure you had enough?
I forgot your title, not your name. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Air Pro, Tim Sullivan.
Okay, I have a lot, because I missed the.
Thank you, Luke.
The public, the civic announcement, so I'll start with those. I wanted to remind everybody that the Hazel Park Arts Fair is this August 24th and 25th. August 24th, it will be 11 to 7:00, and August 25th, it will be 11 to 5:00, and that is at Green Acres Park. I also wanted to remind everybody that the Juneteenth Art Scholarship is currently active. Hazel Park and Frendial students that are juniors and seniors can apply for one of two or both $1,000 scholarships. They can do so by visiting hpart.org, and we're accepting applications until July 15th. I also, on that note, wanted to remind everybody that we are celebrating our Juneteenth flag raising on June 19th at 1:00 P.M. That is an open event, it is open to the public. We have some students speaking, and then we have our lovely diverse elected officials coming to say some short words and really celebrate the freedom that Juneteenth represents. So I want to invite everybody to that. I also wanted to echo the happy pride to everybody, and also happy Father's Day to my father, and happy birthday to my mother, because they're one after the other, so I get a double whammy this weekend. I also wanted to note that I'm wearing orange today, because the gun safety wear orange was this past weekend, and we passed our resolution last month, because we meet after the actual week. But I wanted to remind everybody that 24/7, you can go down to our Hazel Park Police Department and pick up a gun safety lock for free, no questions asked. You just tell them how many you need, and they will hand them over to you. They are a cable lock, there are definitely other options for safe storage, but responsible gun owners include safe storage in their responsibility. I also wanted to thank everybody that came out tonight. Hearing from a Holocaust survivor is, it's really, it comes near and dear to my heart. And I also, I want to correct some misinformation that keeps being circulated. Navistar Defense is a business in Madison Heights that hosted our mayor's dinner, mayor's city's dinner this year, that's Madison Heights Choice. But also, Navistar Defense is not an Israeli arms dealer. They do not, they do not create arms, they don't make or manufacture arms. They have two sides, they have a domestic side, and they also have an industrial side. They actually build and create school buses and municipal vehicles. They do also create anti-landmine and anti-mine vehicles for the military. We currently, the state of Michigan and also the entire United States, do not currently have a contract with Navistar Defense. The city of Hazel Park has no investment in Navistar Defense. But again, I want to echo, they are not an arms manufacturer or an arms dealer, and that's a, that's a thing I keep hearing on repeat, and it's incorrect, it's false information. So on that note, I want to thank everybody again for coming out, and I'll continue to share information, and I appreciate feedback.
Thank you.
I thank everybody for coming out this evening, and I also appreciate everybody's speeches, no matter if it's pro or con, against what we may believe or what not believe. But we do sympathize or empathize with what is happening. But I feel that we should stand our ground, how we feel. As a city, our job is to pass resolutions to promote what the well-being, health, and welfare of our community here. And that's how we send those to Lansing, not Washington, but Lansing, to better, other cities get on the same page, and we pass those resolutions so they can focus on sending funds to say, I got lost for words today, the people that need maybe a little, little funding in a chair to take care of battered women funds, or look out for others against violence, those type of issues. And that's really why we pass a lot of these resolutions, also to make mental awareness a big issue. That's one of my biggest causes, because I have a lot of, I have relatives that have a lot of issues, and I'm sure every one of us do as well. And that's why we pass a lot of resolutions, to do those. And we're not saying it's, you know, we're just saying we're just not going to do an international one anymore, and it's what we did, we're not going to do that anymore. But I do want to go back to Chief Buchholz here. Chief's been serving us for years, along with other chiefs before him. He did a very fine job, and I feel that he's done an impeccable job here for us for many years. And I want to say thank you to him for a great time, and I feel like he's been a good person here to mentor other officers and has made an impact on them as well. And I hope that Bill Hamill will do it just the same, and I think he will, because he has the same character and personality of Chief Buchholz. Thank you. And I also like to say thank you again for having, coming out and enjoying our fair. I think it's, we had a very safe event, and that was our biggest challenge this year, was to make sure we had a safe event, because we had a lot of families out there. I had a lot of people come give me comments after the fair, how they enjoyed it with their kids, and that they, they actually had one parent call me, said, "Thank you for having a friend, didn't lose my child." And they said, they found them so quickly that officers were there to help them find their child. And that makes, as a parent, that makes you feel comfortable, that you can, you feel safe in an environment with your children. And.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I just got a text from Lacey Christensen, who's at Harvard University, attending the same program I attended 18 years ago, the senior executives in state and local government, and she just wanted to say hi.
Wonderful, thank you.
It's on Lacey.
And I want to thank her for, she actually did those end-of-the-year budget transfers in her dorm room on Sunday night and got them sent out to us, so thank her and hope she's enjoying that outstanding program.
I do want to say, reiterate something you brought up earlier about the road diet. Please, again, be patient, let's try this. I know change is not always the greatest thing to do or accept it. Let's try this change. It's been in the works for a while, and there's positive information out there about how these road diets help our community in a very walkable, family-friendly community, and that's what we've always been striving to commit for, instead of having cars zoomed down the road at 50 mile an hour next to the curb of the street, and a person walking a baby, and who God knows what could happen. Think hopefully never does happen. But we want to make sure that we have the environment to make things safe for everyone, seniors, children, whatever, to play and run and ride bikes through our community.
I'd like to, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Thank you.